All here.
And we are recording.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, and I would like to welcome you and call to order the August 11th, Port Orchard City Council regular meeting in pursuit of the governor's stay at home, stay safe order. The council will conduct its meetings using Zoom this evening. And for your convenience and the public's convenience, you can find the link to this meeting on the banner on our, on the front of, front page of our website. The Finance Committee Meetings link was there also this evening. So we're trying to do committee meetings and the council meetings on the day of the meeting will be, the link will be located in that banner. So with that, I will ask you actually to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm jumping all over the place here. So, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So with that, we have a published agenda. Is, are there any modifications to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Luke Garelli to approve the published agenda. Is there any conversation or questions about this evening's agenda? You're none? All in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're none. The agenda is approved. We are to our first citizen comment period, and it is for any items that are on this evening's agenda. If you're wishing to address the council on any other matters, we have a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting. So I see a couple of members of the public. Are you wishing to either one of you see a cat and a run? Either one of you want to address the city council for items on this evening's agenda? This is, you may speak up at this time.
Mayor, do you have to unmute them, or can they unmute themselves?
I think they can unmute themselves.
Okay.
I'll give it just a moment. And if I don't hear from them, then we'll call on them again at the end of the meeting. So, and I'm sorry, Debbie, I see you're here too. And you are, Rotary Club is on the agenda tonight, too. So, and so with that, I will close the first citizen comment period. We are to our consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe to approve the consent agenda as presented. For any discussion of the consent items? You're none? All in favor of approving the consented agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent items have been approved. So our first business item, and we have Debbie Gerganias, the immediate past president of the South Kitsap Rotary Club here with us tonight. So thank her for this donation from the South Kitsap Rotary Club. And Noah has a staff report to read into the record.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Per R C O B thirty five twenty one one hundred, the city council may accept donations of money or property by ordinance. Similarly, per Port Orchard Municipal Code, three point nine oh point oh three oh, monetary and non-monetary donations with a current value greater than five thousand dollars must be approved by city council prior to acceptance. The Rotary Club of South Kitsap.
Noah, we lost your microphone there. You're not back.
Now I'm back.
You're back.
Yes.
And we did get static that Sean was referring to. At least I did when, when he lost his microphone.
Oh, good. So validate what Sean was talking about. That's good. So the Rotary Club has a desire to donate fifteen thousand dollars to the city for the purposes of improving the Editer Turner Memorial Park. The council has already taken some action and amended the city budget during the buying process to contribute twenty five thousand dollars to this overall project. Now, we should bring the total Editer Turner Park improvements to forty thousand dollars if the council agrees to accept this donation. I have to recommend the council adopt ordinance accepting the donation amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the Rotary Club of South Kitsap for the purposes of improving the Editer Turner Memorial Park.
Councilmember Lucarelli.
I move to adopt an ordinance accepting a donation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the Rotary Club of South Kitsap for the purposes of improving the Editer Turner Memorial Park.
Second.
Second.
You got a motion by Councilmember Lucarelli, a second by Councilmember Deener. I think I heard you first. Questions or compliments for the Rotary Club? Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Obviously, being a member of the South Kitsap Rotary Club, very pleased and proud that this money's coming forward. And under Debbie's leadership was very, very outstanding effort and project. And so thank you to the city and to the South Kitsap Rotary Club.
So, Councilmember Kachardi.
Yeah, just our continued thanks. Some of the Rotary Clubs at Port Orchard have been longtime supporters of this, of this community. And once again, stepping forward. So thank you each and every one of you for what you do.
Councilmember Deener.
I too would like to thank the Rotary Club for this. I think it'll be a valuable addition to our waterfront and look forward to seeing it when it's done. So thank you again.
Councilmember Lucarelli.
I also am a member of this club. And Deb, you did a great job with this. One thing was left out. It's the South Kitsap Rotary Club, the Fun Club. Just wanted to have that in for the record.
Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, I too would, would add the same thank you to the club. And you folks have been extremely generous over the years and, and helping us get that park established to begin with. And your continued support is very much appreciated. And I too am looking forward to seeing the results of this next effort come later this year. So thank you very much.
If I, if I can add, and then I'll let a call on Debbie. I also am a member of the Fun Club, and I'm a past president of this Rotary Club. And I remember the time when we built this park in, in memory of Etta, who was an exchange student from our community that died tragically in Bolivia. And, you know, we built this park ahead of the pathway. And then we built the bridge in the pathway, and there just isn't sufficient lighting down at, at that end of the park. So that's what it's to upgrade the existing lighting and add an additional street light down at the base of the bridge. And I think it'll be a fabulous amenity. And we're also going to put some power on the bridge to potentially do some seasonal lighting. So, so Debbie, do you have anything you'd like to?
I wanted to thank the city for also contributing to this. Obviously, we couldn't have done it ourselves and would have needed your approval. And so you're kind of leading the way. And I was very concerned after we had gotten this approved, because I did work hard to get everybody to approve this, because, you know, it's a lot of money for our little club. But with COVID, I was afraid that maybe the city would have to delay, and that might spoil it for us. So I'm glad we had the money set aside and that you guys are moving forward. I think we're all excited to see it happen. So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right. And with that, the motion on the floor is to approve the acceptance of a donation for fifteen thousand dollars for improvements by the South Kitsap Rotary Club for the improvements to the Editer Turner Memorial Park. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the donation has been accepted. Thank you, Debbie.
Can I say one more thing? But don't forget, we're still selling bricks that are going to be added.
All right. We, to our second business item is adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters twenty point six eight accessory dwelling units. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. In March twenty nineteen, the city council adopted ordinance eleven dash nineteen, which created Chapter twenty point six eight of the Port Orchard Municipal Code concerning accessory dwelling units to provide the requirements for permit submittal, review criteria, and conditions of approval for accessory dwelling units. The city has now had a year of implementing this code. And after receiving feedback and suggestions for improvements from the city council and the public, staff has prepared several clarifications and revisions to Chapter twenty point six eight. These changes are intended to promote and assist the development of accessory dwelling units within a neighborhood by removing the potential hardships and obstacles to A D U development while continuing to protect neighboring properties. The proposed changes include a new section in twenty point six eight one hundred to clarify that only one A D U is permitted on one lot. Changes to Section twenty point six eight one hundred subsection four is revised to clarify that although a property owner must maintain his legal residence in either the property, the primary unit, or the A D U for at least six months of the year, and the owner may not rent out both units at one time, the property may rent out a room in his, his or her legal residence, i.e. may have roommates, while also renting out the A D U. This change, as proposed, would not prevent a property owner from leaving the property for up to six months with the primary unit occupied by a roommate and the A D U occupied by a renter. Chapter six, twenty point six eight one hundred subsection nine prevented a property owner from having separate utility meters and billing for the A D U, and that has been removed. Section twenty point six eight one ten sub six is revised to clarify that lot coverage calculation for the property with the A D U is required to include all buildings, including the A D U, the primary buildings and accessory buildings. When an A D U is proposed, accessory buildings must meet the required setbacks for the relevant zone and building type. And finally, Sections twenty point six eight one ten subsection ten prohibit access, prohibited accessory buildings over two hundred square feet, and that has been removed as well. So this ordinance was recommended last, earlier this month by the Planning Commission for approval, and staff recommends that the city council approve it as presented.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending the accessory dwelling units code in Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter twenty point six eight as presented.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Chang. Anyone wish to comment or ask any questions about this matter? Councilmember Chang?
Um, yes. Nick, can you tell us a little more about how many accessory dwelling units have been added since the ordinance came out last year?
So I'm aware, I believe there has been one attached A D U and one detached A D U. And I don't know whether they were constructed. I know that, that I saw permit applications come in, but I don't always track every permit that comes through our, our department. But I could get you a more concrete number tomorrow if you, if you'd like.
Thank you. I was just curious. I appreciate these changes because I think it could make it easier for people to, to add another unit to their lot if they have the desire to. So I would support this motion.
That's good, because you've seconded it. Other comments or questions? Okay, the motion on the floor is to adopt an ordinance amending code as it relates to accessory dwelling units. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Our last business item this evening is approval, approval of amending personal policy four point two and adopting personal policy four point eight related to telecommuting. We have the privilege of having Debbie Lund, our H R coordinator with us tonight. And it appears that teleworking is not going away anytime soon. So we had some emergency provisions for that, but we felt it was appropriate maybe to amend our code to permanently consider telecommuting. So Debbie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everybody. That was a perfect lead into our subject. We first introduced telecommuting as part of the pandemic response and the governor's order to stay home. Some employees are still telecommuting a hundred percent of the time. Others do a little bit of split telecommuting and work in the office, and others are in the office full time. But staff, and thanks in huge part to our I T network administrator, Steve Havert, have been able to make teleworking successful and have a desire to have that continue. Once we return to a normal basis, we do not anticipate any changes while we're still in COVID response. But once we return to normal, we'd like to establish some parameters for what telecommuting would look like. This proposal has two separate categories of those agreements, routine, meaning on a regular basis, and a temporary classification, perhaps. It's a recovery from a surgery or something like that where it's easier for the individual to work at home. So bringing you this policy four point eight as a new policy for your consideration. And there's a minor tweak to policy four point two. And before we go any further, I want to bring your attention to the typo I discovered today. On page four or page thirty four of your packet, under letter B one A, the second paragraph, the very last line, says the mayor or mayors designed, and that should be mayor or mayors designate. So my apologies for that typo.
I move to amend personnel policy four point two and adopt personal policy four point eight related to telecommuting and authorize the mayor to implement the policies as presented.
Excellent. Okay, Councilmember Kachardi made a motion, and Councilmember Clausen seconded that motion. There are comments related to this matter? It's pretty self-explanatory. And we're, as a rule, I think we're going to allow that when we get back to normal, whenever that is, you can, you'll be able to telecommute a couple of days a week if it's approved, and it's to the benefit of the city and the employee. So we just want to put some ground rules out there, because this has kind of turned into the new norm. So with that, you'll be voting on amending our personnel policy four point two and for, and adopting four point four eight related to telecommuting. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. So we are on to our council committee reports. We have no discussion items this evening. So the Finance Committee met this evening. Councilmember Clausen, do you have anything to share from that meeting?
Yeah, actually, a fair amount of items that we talked about. The most exciting was we went over the sales tax receipts and the refunding. As many of you, I think the mayor shared verbally, that our receipts that we brought in in July were very strong, about ten percent year-over-year changes. Plus, then we're actually right now at just about four percent ahead, which was great. The REIT money wasn't quite as strong, but we had a bit of a slow period in March when COVID first came around, and a lot of construction had been put on pause. But it's been making that up. So the last couple of months, we've had some pretty decent reserve or receipts there in the black. So overall, I think they're doing fine. As far as the other funds, we had quite a discussion on the lodging tax dollars and the fact that they're coming in below what our projections were, but so are our expenditures. And so many festivals have postponed or delayed for this year. So I think overall, it's kind of holding right where we need it to be. We did talk also a bit about changes to the development fee schedule for D C D. And the committee is supportive of that, and that's going to be coming forward to the full council for discussion. And we had a fair amount of discussion also with talking about the sewer C F C discussions. We had talked about that when Katie Isaacson was here and kind of presented the different numbers. And we pretty much went through those, I guess you could say, in some level of detail, so that we could better understand the numbers that are being proposed for both projected growth in the number of residential and multifamily dwelling units, as well as how that's going to work with projects in the, in our project list for the sewer utility. We also talked about the issue, if you remember the discussion we had, about the fifty percent or a hundred percent difference in the, what we're referring to is the inflation factor or the interest factor. We had a lot of discussion on that. The committee pretty much settled on agreeing to recommend that the, we use a hundred percent number in that category. And that is going to be coming to the council, the full council at the next meeting as well. Hopefully, we'll be able to better explain when we have the numbers in front of us. And the goal, of course, is to get the full council to have a better understanding and certainly what the committee is recommending as well. So that was pretty much the discussion. John and Beck, I don't know if there's anything that you would like to add, or Noah?
John, I just think the only other thing that the committee talked about was also the calculation for C P I annually, and that the committee was, was, was in agreement that that should be something that we should enact moving forward, or adopt moving forward.
Thank you. Yeah, I did leave that part out. So if we accept the rates and things that we're proposing here, then we would also include that automatic C P I adjustment on an annual basis.
And I would just add with our sales tax revenue, that the importance of shopping local, because I'm not, I believe that our citizens are shopping in Port Orchard and not leaving the area as much as they used to. And I see that's, I think that's a lot of what's reflected in those sales tax numbers. So shopping local is a very, very important mantra for us.
Something. And the other thing I think I would add to the sales tax receipts is the fact that, you know, we had a pretty good month in July, but we still got a long ways to go. So we're in the black, but we're not flush with cash. So we're going to have to pay attention and be careful as we move forward, just to keep an eye on it. So I think that's pretty much the report.
Thank you for your report. Councilmember Ashby, you had an economic development and tourism meeting, I think it was yesterday.
We did yesterday. Councilmember Kachardi, who chairs it, was unable to join us. So I'll give the report. We started with an LTAC discussion, much that John has already talked about. We talked about the reduction in revenue for LTAC this year. We talked about the, the applicants are not seeking reimbursement that they, for their awards for two thousand, for this year, because they're not putting on the advance. And so we are going to bring for discussion at our next council meeting, some alternatives and some criteria, so that we can get a consensus on what we want LTAC to look like next year. I believe that Brandy's putting forth a summary of that discussion, so that you'll all have it in your packet. But some ideas that were presented was allowing the nonprofits that were awarded this year to be able to just roll those awards over till next year. There was questions or discussion about not doing that and taking that money that wasn't reimbursed this year and spreading it over the next biennium. There were questions about when do we start the LTAC process? Do we need to be in phase four before we even start it? So there was a lot of discussion on LTAC. And it warrants some input from the full council before the LTAC committee starts meeting. So expect that to be on our council agenda next week. We then had a presentation that was given by Nick Bond on where the convention center, the Rice, Fergus, Miller evaluation is going at this point. And they have identified six properties within the downtown area for potential sites, and that will be narrowing down to three. And the report to us was just to let us see which sites were being, you know, being considered. And if I could remember all of them, I would tell you, but I'm not remembering all of them right now. Then, then Nick gave us a presentation on the development that is happening, the construction, the building industry that is going on in Port Orchard right now. And he showed us, I'm assuming it was a Google Map type thing, where developments are already permitted, where he has accepted applications for developments. And it was very eye-opening, both for single-family residents and for multifamily residents. Typically, last year, we permitted, I'm not sure, but I think it was sixty or seventy single-family units. And Nick, you can correct me. But this year so far, we have already permitted seventy two single-family residents, and he has twenty more permits waiting to be picked up. And he let us know, again, he showed us where various developers were looking at developing. And some of them are gearing up to produce about four hundred houses a year. So it was real significant. It was really, really eye-opening. And I hope at some time, the whole council has an opportunity to, to see that information. And I think that was pretty much the meeting. There was a lot of good discussion at the meeting. There was good discussion about the development that's happening. There was good discussion about the potential convention-centered sites downtown, and there was robust discussion about LTAC. So anyway, it was a good meeting, and we'll meet again the second Monday of September.
And thank you for your report. And utilities, it looks like you meet next Tuesday?
Actually, that meeting has been canceled. And so it, the next meeting is in September, September fifteenth, I'm guessing, right, Brandy? Does that seem right? The third?
We'll confirm that and get this updated.
I'll confirm it. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And I see the advisory committee is September sixteenth. I don't believe they've met since our last meeting either.
Right.
Okay. Land use, have you met?
Land use has not met. We've had a hard time with that. And this meeting date has been shifted to August thirty first now.
Okay. Good information. We'll get this updated. Transportation, I don't believe you've met either. And I see there's a meeting scheduled for August seventeenth. Is that still correct, or has it been moved?
No, it's next Monday at nine thirty.
Okay. Which is, I'm not sure what that'd be. Yeah, that'd be the seventeenth. That was the date I gave. Yes. All right. Lodging tax, I don't believe anything's been scheduled, but we've talked about that a lot. And we'll be talking about that at the next council meeting. Is there anything for chimes and lights? I saw you guys working on Christmas trees already.
Yes, yes. We're supposed to be meeting next Monday, but that may be moved, and I will send that information around if it is.
Okay. All right. Outside agencies, do you have anything to share, Beck, from any of your outside agencies?
No. Again, August is a slow month. A lot of the agencies don't, K S, K R C C does not meet, and P S R C Transpall is not meeting in August either. So I don't have anything right now.
Okay, I have two. One, today was the Housing Kitset Board Meeting, and we got a, got to see the twenty eighteen, yes, twenty eighteen draft audit from our contract auditor. There's still some punch list items, but it's getting close. And also today, we approved the twenty twenty one budget. So, which is exciting. It does show a three hundred thousand dollar loss. And the biggest reason why is that we're in the process of raising rents. And because of the governor's no eviction order, also prevents any rents from being raised. So if that order gets lifted in October, it will help us to raise our rents, which are still going to be, this is, these are subs, this is subsidized housing. It'll still be lower than market rate rents, but the agency does need to operate in the black. And, but that right now is preventing us from operating in the black, because we can't raise rents, or we're projecting that we can't if the COVID, if COVID continues. And we had a special public health board meeting last week, and it was so And we had a special public health board meeting last week and it was solely about COVID. And this, you know, this is a week old data, but some of the things that I captured. At that point, our state had 58,000 cases and 1,600 deaths or 2.7% of the deaths. There was a big change in, you know, from the beginning, it was folks in their 50s that were leading the cases. And now it's the the 20-year-old, 20, you know, the 20-year-old bracket. And previously also, when they contacted a case, there would be. You know, three or four people that that person came in contact with and now it's in the line of 20 or 25 people. So it's a much heavier lift there. I was encouraged, it's only three days in a row, but we were hovering around 100 active cases, just shy of that high 90s. Here a week ago and the last few days, it's down in the in the 70s and it was actually at 70, I believe, today. So that's encouraging and hopefully it stays there and continues to trend downward. That's it for my outside agencies and I'll dive into my mayor's report. I want to remind you that we have no council meeting on August 25th. And we do have a, instead of a work study, a regular council meeting with discussion items on it next week. It'll be a fairly hefty agenda. Our Port Orchard cares grants that Kida is managing for us. We were seeking to award 20 grants. We received 17 applications. Were on, two of them were ineligible, one wasn't complete. And the other one that was ineligible wasn't in the city. So we have 15 valid applications and 14 of them, we have all of the documentation for. And we're starting to work through the contracting process with those individuals to award that money. I would like your guidance, I guess. The county is doing its awards today, their application process was today. I'd like the dust to settle. We still have five slots available and would you be supportive of us going back out next week? And. Re, you know, seeking additional applications. Are we all good with that? Okay, sounds good. Councilmembers, look really, we're getting a little bit of feedback here and if you're the only one other than myself that's not muted, if I could get you to maybe mute yourself. Perfect, thank you. Um, all right. I shared a video with, we talked, okay, back up here, the community center, Beck talked about that. Quickly in her report, I'll share with you the six sites under consideration. One is the Port of Bremerton property, the original site, the current Kitsap Bank branch site. The chain linked site there on Frederick, the Myrie site, the like our current library site. And our property at 640 Bay Street. And so those are the six and Cindy, I guess Cindy's holding it up on her phone. And the, those are the six that we're starting with. We met with the the bank and the developer last week. We're meeting with Kitsap Regional Library this Friday. And the goal is is by the roughly the end of the month, we'll have the six down to the three sites that we will do a deeper dive on. And evaluate the feasibility of those sites. I shared a video with Northwest Hospitality. I thought that was really cool with that cleanup on Blackjack Creek and I'm still working through, looking for a way to recognize the folks that did that cleanup. So I think that was pretty cool. The maritime, I talked about the maritime National Heritage Steering Committee and Councilmember Lucarelli said she was interested in that. And I've nominated for her for that, so hopefully she hears back soon. If you're accepted, that'd be great and to share with us what you learned from that. Our deputy chief has announced his retirement as of December 31st. And hopefully we'll have an a, an announcement soon about his potential replacement. We had a meeting last week with the Gorst Coalition. And it's about fixing the bottleneck in Gorst. And Councilmember Clausen and I were at that meeting and they're still looking to firm up who the members are. They may ask us, actually all of the jurisdictions, to help start a design and scoping work. I just listened, I didn't offer any money and I'm a little disappointed that the project is one interchange short of where I think it needs to be for us to be. Pledging dollars to this and that would be the Sedgwick interchange. And I think if that got included, I think I, I know I would be much more excited about. Putting some of our resources to help solve this problem, so. But ultimately, that's that's your decision. You know, remember we approved a contract for those that tank cleaning? And you're probably going to see a modest change order related to that, that that had. For removal of one to two inches of sediment and the first tank that we did had 10 inches of sediment in it. So it's much more in there, so it took a little longer and so we're not quite sure, but I don't think it'll be a huge dollar amount. And I shared earlier an email with you folks about the Marina breakwater project. And the port has, and their lobbyist approached our lobbyist and had a meeting with us. And they feel that this breakwater was, it is very important to the Port of Bremerton to to replace this aging breakwater. They're going to have a capital request in the in the budget. It was going to be very grand at one point, about $5 million they were going to ask for. And we didn't feel that was realistic and they wanted us to support them in that. What we've talked about is they've gotten a little more realistic and gotten a little more skin in the game, them asking for $2 million. And that they would, we would partner, partner with them and we're going to likely have an ask looking for. Real estate acquisition dollars for a site for a community center. And we would make it a downtown Port Orchard redevelopment activity ask and we would work collaboratively. In our two capital requests and I just wanted to. See if anybody gets, has any concerns about that as Josh and I work through that process. We felt it was a good idea and if we work together versus against each other. And so I just want to share that thought and that's, yes, Councilmember Ashby?
I would just say that I believe that Marina is an economic driver for downtown. And I would be completely supportive of partnering with them to get the breakwater upgraded.
All right, that's that's kind of what we were looking for. So we'll, obviously here in November, so you'll be approving our legislative agenda and Josh and I are working on that. And this is one of those items and and, you know, we're looking, they're looking to look for about 2 million. We're going to ask for about a million and if we're all lucky, we get 500 to 750,000. That's usually about how it works and they're, and they walk away with about a million five. So just being realistic, there's probably three to $5 million in a good year down in Olympia for our legislative district. And for us to partner together and walk away with, you know, more than half of it would be, I think, a coup on our part and the ports. So with that, that is my mayor's report. And we're going to take citizen comment and then head into an executive session. So is there anyone from the public wishing, Councilmember Clausen, yes, before I go to citizen comment?
Do you want to do department hits?
Oh, why not? Okay, I can do those.
This is a suggestion.
Okay, I appreciate the the guidance. We'll start with the police chief, Matt Brown.
Uh, yeah, I only have a couple of things, but I really want to thank everyone for the feedback that I've been getting from you. We've had two recent promotions, it's a, it's a really big deal and you guys made that happen. The first time in this department's history that we've had four sergeants and we've got some incredible people down there and we're doing some incredible things. The other piece that I wanted to do was make sure that you all knew that. We're working on this accreditation that's that's come up quite a bit in the community and in public conversations. And I would encourage you, if you have time, please reach out. I'd love to sit down with you and explain what it is and why it's important and what it would bring to the city. But I think probably on an individual basis, when you have the opportunity to ask questions, it'd be more appropriate than in this forum. But again, thank you very much. I know that the team's very appreciative of that for sergeant, so thank you.
Brandy, do you have anything you want to share?
Yes, so I was going through some of the tasks that I have and noticed that we still have an active resolution for hanging a banner across Bay Street. The state route 166. And wanted to see if the council's interested in me bringing forth a resolution repealing that program. We're not using it. I know that there was an alternative solution to hang banners along the chain link fence that borders the 640 Bay Street property that the city owns. We've had a handful of people use that. And we're just using the same guidance as this resolution as to the the cost and when they can sign up. But the last few months pre-COVID, there hasn't been a whole lot of opportunities from the public wanting to use that. So just wanted to see if you want to leave it on the books and reevaluate it at a different time or if you want to go ahead and remove it from the books. And then when there is some change downtown to have this program back in place that we could relook at the the roles and the processes of how we want to handle that at that time.
Councilmember Clausen?
Brandy, it doesn't hurt anything to leave it on the books, does it?
No, only that we'll just update our website that states that we're currently not accepting applications.
Well, I understand we're not able to put anything across Bay Street at this point. But if it's a document that you're utilizing in other locations, at least you have something to point to.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know that we shouldn't, if we're going to keep it and continue to hang it on, we might want to amend this at a minimum. It isn't feasible at all that we're going to ever hang with our current situation with the light poles and the marquee to hang a banner on on those until the lights get replaced downtown, so.
I would be fine with a revision so that it's more appropriate to what you guys are dealing with on a day-to-day. Otherwise, if it's something that you can work with now, just leave it in.
We'll have the attorney take a look at what we have and what what our practice is and potentially bring an amendment forward then. Eventually, we might not own that site. That's the, that's the goal that we're currently hanging them. The banners on the fence. So, okay, anything else, Brandy?
That's it.
Okay, Charlie, you have anything?
Just briefly, the OPMA proclamation that allows us to do the Zoom meetings in addition to the modification to your own code has been extended to September 1st. So this is our normal until at least then, likely to be extended further. And the other proclamation that's of note, the suspension of late payments and water shutouts has been extended to October 15th. And if you ever have any questions about the ever-changing legal landscape of all these proclamations, feel free to reach out.
Okay, Noah, last but not least.
I have nothing, okay, but Nick Bond might be the last though.
Oh, yeah, man, I'm just skipping things tonight. Hey, Nick?
I just wanted to remind everyone that our parks plan, our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan survey is live and online. If you haven't taken it yet, there is an incentive, although I don't know that it applies to city council members, but anybody in the public who takes the survey is eligible for a $250 gift card for participating. So we're really trying to encourage participation. I think we sent out 8,000 mailers on this one and have quite a few responses so far, but if you haven't provided your input, please do.
Okay, thanks, Dick. Mark Dorsey is on vacation, so we all got 10 minutes back of our time tonight. With that, that's all of our staff reports. Either members of the public wish to address the city council this evening for anything that's on your minds? Feel free to unmute yourselves if you wish to. Okay, I hearing none. We're going to head into an executive session, so the members of the public will need to to leave our meeting. We're going to have a 15-minute executive session. Related to real estate matters and it's related to RCW 42.30, 0.1101B. And I think we also might have an update on litigation too, Charlie, and.
RCW 423110, subpart one, subpart I, related to discussing potential litigation related to an agency enforcement action or pending litigation.
Perfect, so with that. Debbie, you can go ahead and take off and.